Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 13th, 2024 meeting of the Penfield Planning Board. We'll begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right. Thanks, everyone, for coming tonight. Doug, would you please call the roll?
Hetzke.
Hetzke here.
Aiken.
Aiken here.
Knauer.
Knauer here.
Tidings.
Tidings here.
Weisar.
Weisar here.
O'Connor.
O'Connor here.
Prinzing.
Prinzing here.
Stenster here.
Okay, we have minutes from our last meeting.
May 9th meeting.
Hopefully, everybody's had an opportunity to review them. Can I entertain a motion to approve?
Tidings' motion to approve.
I'll second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Knauer?
Knauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
All right, we have three items on our agenda this evening, and our last public hearing in May was left open until this evening. The way we have been operating for the last, how many years have we gone straight into public hearings? Let's call it five years, and if it's not that, then my bad. So typically, we have a work session covering our tabled items between 6:30 and 7:00. We begin the public hearing portion at 7:00, unless our work session portion is done prior to that, then we move directly into the public hearing. This evening, our only work session item happens to be still an open public hearing, and so if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to, do we need to read?
Why don't we read it just so we know?
They'll read it back into the record. Okay.
Okay. Let's go ahead and read that, Doug.
Tabled application, one, BME Associates, Tunliffe Bridge Lane East, Fairport, New York, 14450, on behalf of Insight Land Development, Inc., requests under Chapter 250, Article 11-11.2 and Article 12-12.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for final subdivision and site plan approval for revised lot layout of Phase 2 of the Stafford Park subdivision on 4.3 acres at 1918 Jackson Road. The property is now or formerly owned by Insight Land Development, Inc., and zoned single-family residential R120, application number 24P-0007, SBL 124.16-1-39.31.
Okay, so this is an approval of, or an application for approval subdivision and site plan for Phase 2 of--
Stafford Park.
Stafford Park subdivision. We've had the hearing open since May--
9th.
9th, and is there anyone that would like to speak to that from the public here this evening before we close the hearing? Going once, going twice. Okay. One, I know that there have been some questions regarding this application that I would like to address for the record before we close the public hearing. First item is the wetlands question. Based on the town's GIS mapping and information provided by other agencies, there was an initial indication that there may be a freshwater wetland under federal jurisdiction on the property, meaning a federal wetland. A project engineer delineated the area of concern and requested a formal delineation and determination from the agency having jurisdiction, which is the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers in this case, to ascertain whether or not the area is, in fact, a protectable wetland. These determinations take time, and in order to maintain the continuity of the applicant's business, the applicant applied for site plan and subdivision approval, assuming the area in question was indeed a protectable wetland. Overall, preliminary site plan and subdivision approval was granted based on these assumptions, and the planning board approved the project with 20 lots to be developed over two phases. During Phase 1, two lots were re-subdivided into one lot, effectively making the overall subdivision 19 lots. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers subsequently determined that the area in question is indeed not a wetland, and the applicant revised their proposed lot layout for Phase 2 accordingly, requesting approval for an additional lot, bringing the total lot count back to the originally approved 20 lots. During the planning board's review of this request, some additional benefits of the neighbors were proposed. To avoid the assumed wetlands, the house pads at the north end of the subdivision were placed further back toward the rear property line, reducing the distance and buffer between the new homes and the existing homes on Thorn Tree Circle and Jackson Road. With the new design, the house pads can be moved further away from the rear property line, creating greater distance and buffer between the new homes and the existing homes on Thorn Tree. As a result of this, the planning board is also now considering placing a conservation easement along the north property line of the new lots to provide additional buffering between the existing homes on Thorn Tree Circle, Jackson Road, and the new homes. Another question came up on drainage. The D.C. Blue Book Stormwater Regulations state that a new development or subdivision cannot produce a net increase in off-site runoff that previously existed. In addition, Chapter 198, Article 2 of the Penfield Town Code, in conjunction with the town drainage policy, goes above and beyond the state regulations and requires a 20% reduction in off-site flow. I've heard throughout the years accusations from residents about this, that the town does not care about any of this, and I want to state that those accusations are categorically false. Grading. The hill along the western side of the project area is a temporary topsoil stockpile. It will be drawn from and used to help with final grading on the overall site, including to provide swales to channel stormwater and to catch basins and inlets, and ultimately into detention or retention ponds, as per the design that gets reviewed and approved by staff in our engineering department, per state regulations. I'd also like to address the comment that was made about so-called secret or closed-door meetings. I have never participated in or attended a secret meeting of the planning board to discuss or make decisions about any project under consideration. We are subject to the open meetings law, and while certain aspects of the law were suspended during COVID due to the worldwide shutdown, Penfield went above and beyond most other communities to allow public input and participation. For example, prior to COVID, if you wanted to speak at a hearing, you were required to come to the town hall and get up and speak. During COVID and ever since, you may sit on your couch and call in, or submit something in writing electronically, and we monitor those during the hearing. The accusation that we conduct meetings behind closed doors is not only category false, categorically false, but frankly insulting and offensive. The members of this board and all other boards in Penfield are comprised of your neighbors, residents of Penfield. We volunteer our time to this board because we care deeply about our community. Last thing I want to address is town staff. It was stated that interactions with town staff were less than professional, and staff became arrogant and intimidating. My 27 years of experience serving this town, Penfield's staff have always been very professional, thorough, and caring about what is best for the town. I just want that in the minutes on the record for this application. That said, we have all the information that we need on this, correct? And there are some conditions that we want to put into the resolution, which we've discussed on the conservation easement and all those other--
Conservation easement, additionally, the three trees per lot for lots 204, 205, 206, and an additional tree on 203, sorry. The number ring gets me off a little.
Yes, landscape buffering.
Some additional landscape buffering. So that'd be providing three additional trees on 204, 205, and 206, yes, and one additional tree on Lot 203.
Okay. Does anybody on the board have any concerns currently on this that haven't been addressed?
I just take a quick look at this report I just received dated May 3rd to mark from BME Associates and just wanted to make sure with Engineering's happy with it, the letter, they got a chance to read this, and Rudy's addressed it properly if we needed to ask Rudy any more questions, but I think it seems correct that they're addressed. I don't know if you understand. You're good, Mike?
I believe so, yes. We're good.
Okay.
Other one, I'm good.
Bob, anything?
No, I'm good.
Kelly?
I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Do we want to--
You're going to close the public hearing first?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. So I will officially call this public hearing closed, and so does that mean we move sort of into work session to cover this, or how does that work?
We could do it now, or we could do it at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, there was a time when we were doing them right after, too, but, you know, or maybe that was his own--
Okay, we might as well get this squared away. So we need to do approve the EAF?
We have--
Yep. authorize me to sign that. I don't know if, Kelly, you want to--
Yeah, motion for AJ to sign the EAF.
Which is the environmental assessment form?
I'll second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Knauer?
Knauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay, and then we have a draft approval resolution--
Yep.
--that's in editing form at the moment.
Yep, those conditions will be added in.
Need to add those conditions, and do we want to, do you want to move?
Move to finalize the--
Approve?
Approve the draft resolution.
You have a second?
I will second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Knauer?
Knauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay. Thank you. Next item. We're moving right on into our regular public hearing agenda. I know it seems a little out of sorts tonight, but Doug, would you like to read the first application, which happens to be a sketch plan application?
All right, application number one, Lobella Associates, 300 State Street, Suite 201, Rochester, New York, 14614, on behalf of Rochester Gas and Electric Corporation, requesting an informal discussion before the board with the proposed site plan for an expanded rebuild of an existing electrical substation on .065 acres at 2055 and 2075 Empire Boulevard. The property is now or formerly owned by Rochester Gas and Electric Corporation and Zoned Limited Business, L.B., application number 24P-0010, SBL 93.07-2-37 and -38.
Okay, well, if you want to come up and sit there, you can, or you can stay where you are.
He's here for all the public.
So you're not part of their--
No, he is.
Oh.
Good evening. Mary Steblin with Lobella Associates.
I'm Meg Yoshida, on behalf of Argenee.
Ledeselwator, on behalf of Argenee.
Okay. Okay, floor is yours.
All right. So Argenee proposes a rebuild of the existing Station 55, currently located at 2075 Empire Boulevard, for increased reliability and additional capacity in the Penfield and Webster areas. The substation rebuild will in turn support upgrades to transmission and distribution lines in the area. We have appeared before this planning board with a previous iteration of Station 55, which was on Seabury Boulevard, back in July and September of 2022. We also presented at the ZBA at that time. Argenee took the feedback that was received from the boards, the public, and town staff, and assessed alternative substation locations. Argenee was able to purchase the property at 2055 Empire Boulevard, which is currently shown on the screen, and is immediately adjacent to the existing Station 55 at the intersection with Kirkland Drive, Zoned Limited Business. This property is one of the first properties as you enter Penfield from Webster. This is a more commercial location than the Seabury Boulevard location, and we believe it better fits the use as a substation and is consistent with the feedback that was provided by the town. The adjacent residential property on Kirkland to the west is in the R120 zoning district, so we're at an interface between two districts. The proposed substation would include four pre-engineered metal-sided gas-insulated switchgear buildings and one control building, which are configured to appear as one single building. There would also be two transformers with oil-containing foundations and firewalls, electrical vaults and handholes, duct banks, conduit trenches, new stone substation yard, all surrounded by security fencing with vehicle gates and appropriate lighting. Lighting would consist of building-mounted wall packs and perimeter security lighting, generally illuminated from dusk till dawn. Additional task lighting would be installed, however, it would only be used if night work was required. Fixtures would be full cutoff, and Chairman Hetzke will be happy to hear that Argenee has standardized on LED lighting as opposed to the high-pressure sodium that you may have seen in previous applications.
All right.
The substation would be unmanned and therefore doesn't require parking, sanitary lateral water service, or trash storage. We received comments from both the town's project review committee and from Monroe County Planning. With regard to the PRC comments received, we did modify the renderings from our original submission to show an alternative fence, and these are actually the older renderings.
Correct.
Okay.
They, we sent them Tuesday.
They should be in their map.
So as I was saying, we had modified the renderings that we had previously submitted to swap out this chain link fence along Kirkland Drive and Empire Boulevard for a fancier fence, to use a technical term, and also to provide a different architectural aesthetic for the firewall around the transformers, and we provided a couple of options for consideration. In future submissions, we would plan to address sidewalk installation along Empire Boulevard, the photometrics, stormwater management, per the town's requirements, was just mentioned, that reduction of 20%. Sound studies, which of course would be needed for secret purposes, compared to the application that we made in late fall, that just wanted to point out that on the screens, you can see that swapped-out fence. So sound studies would be in the future. We made an initial application in the fall, which showed the building closer to Empire Boulevard and the transformers closer to the resident on Kirkland Drive, and that layout has been swapped based on some feedback from PRC at that time in order to move the transformers further away from the resident and therefore mitigate potential noise from the transformers. Other engineering comments included the need for New York State DOT permitting, which is on our radar, and then potentially variances that would need to be considered. The PRC committee, or PRC comments also suggested the incorporation of landscaping to soften the look of the transformer wall. However, there is limited space due to the DOT right-of-way and Argenee's standards for security, which require visibility into the station. We do anticipate some possible variances, including lot coverage, setbacks, fencing, as I don't think we could meet even the public utility exemption for eight feet, and the potential buffer between this property and the adjacent residential zoning district. I think that's it.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions, and thank you for your presentation. The fence you mentioned won't meet requirements even for a utility. Is that the perimeter fence or fencing around the transformers?
The perimeter fence itself.
How tall do you propose that?
Typically, Argenee's standard is, if it was chain link, it'd be eight feet with a one-foot barbed wire outrigger. Obviously, that won't look very nice there, but it would still be nine feet.
Around nine feet.
Nine feet.
Nine feet?
Yeah.
Okay, I will say that the different fence does look nicer. I've, you know, looked at the renderings and, you know, imagine myself driving southwest on Empire Boulevard, entering the town of Penfield, and see the, hey, welcome to Penfield sign, and like, am I going into East Germany here? Is this a, you know, bunker with guards and machine guns and stuff that are going to stop me? How can you dress this up? You know, I think at the last one, I brought in pictures of the, there's one on Mount Hope Ave that is, frankly, it's beautiful, and if they can have that, why can't we have something like that? And that's, I understand the need and totally agree with the need for infrastructure and having this, but if other areas of the community can get them to look nice, we, I for one would like the same consideration in Penfield, and that doesn't necessarily seem to have been, other than the fence, I will grant you that, but the rest of it is--
So I can speak--
Not the most attractive-looking structure, and there's plenty of substations that are, you would never even know. And the Mount Hope one is a perfect example of that.
So the Mount Hope substation was a very different application for a larger voltage of transmission. That's partly why it's so large, and the indoor facility was kind of a one-time trial. It is exorbitantly expensive and not conducive for anybody as a ratepayer, so it's not something that Argenee is moving forward with for any future substations. This substation is a much lower voltage in and of itself, so that is why the control house is a lot smaller versus the one on Mount Hope. Fence is exactly the same as the one on Mount Hope. It will be the black decorative picket style that kind of arches out. As far as, you know, comparing indoor to outdoor, indoor just probably from an Argenee perspective is not going to happen again. The operations has been having a lot of issues with the indoor transformers, with the cables coming in to the facility as a whole, and so that idea has been scrapped for many other future stations. Now, we did try to, in the renders, the control house, it's a little bit yellow, but I brought samples here of what we're proposing because the desert tan siding and then the arctic white roof, they do come a little yellow here. Added some windows to try to make it a little more residential, but again, this is going to be behind the transformer walls that we provided some different variations for architectural style. They'd be a split-faced style CMU block, which adds a little bit more texture. I mean, we can do various colors. We try to do the same color matching to bring in what the surrounding areas, like the U of R building across the street. I know the tire shop immediately adjacent is a little more like blacks and reds, but we can vary the colors based on what everybody prefers. But at the end of the day, you know, we do, in order to provide the area with the power that we need, we have to expand the substation.
Totally understood. The, I have a couple of follow-up questions. The, not to beat the dead horse of the Mount Hope, it was more the appearance from the street than high voltage, low voltage, any of those. I mean, to me, there's, whatever type of equipment it's concealing doesn't necessarily, or is not necessarily affected by what the facade looks like.
So that's an all-brick facility, which we had received feedback from the board before that they didn't want any brick, and if that's changed, you can just let us know.
That wasn't from the board. That was, I believe, from staff.
Oh, excuse me.
Just because it was inconsistent with the other facilities in this area.
Okay, but there's, so there's another one that I'm familiar with that's right on Plank Road, just east of Five Mile, that if you drive by that, the average Joe thinks it's a house, and are you saying that those are problematic for Argenee?
No, just the Mount, the Mount Hope one is not the standard. I'm not 100% positive about that one. I know that for this application, standards change over time, and the standard now from engineering are these like pod structures, and so to try to make it more like a house, they put them all together--
Yep.
--because it's way more cost-effective and quicker to build something like that than it is to build, yeah, like a house type of thing. We can bring it back.
Totally understand that, but again, at the same time, if applicant XYZ came in and said, hey, and I can remember, I can remember one from several years ago, hey, I want to put up a metal building behind this other plaza, and it just didn't, didn't fly, and it was, you know, they have to justify their costs and so on and so forth. So there are certain levels of expectation, I guess, that we're trying to meet here and reach in town, and, you know, you go into different communities all over the United States and you see, well, hey, there's a McDonald's, for example, that's as basic as basic gets and very low cost, and then you go into other communities and you say, holy moly, what, that's beautiful. And so I think I can, I hope I'm speaking for the community and our board in saying that while we don't need the super high end, we'd like, we don't want the bare bones bottom. So somewhere in between, and frankly, above the 50% level would be, would be great.
I totally understand where you are coming from. We do take that into consideration that this is not the bare bones application by any means. I do, the bare bones looks hideous, but, and it is meant for rural types of applications. This is not that, and I can take the, you know, request for it looking like a residential house back to the team. However, we do have to be cognizant across the board that if, if the parcel was zoned residential, that's a bit different than it being zoned--
I'm not necessarily suggesting that it has to look like a house. What I'm suggesting is that it be a little more dressed up, or actually significantly more dressed up than it is. So, you know, you mentioned the Mount Hope as, well, there's no way we're ever going to do that, and to me, that's, okay. That place looks like a college building, and it is something, the difference between the, what that looks like to the average person driving by versus what this is proposed to look like driving by is pretty stark.
Do you have specific suggestions, then? Are you saying more, you don't like the transformer wall close to the road, you want the buildings to look different? Is there a bit more tactile feedback I can bring back to the engineering team? Because we could go, you know, a bunch of different directions, bring something back, and you're like, nope, that's not what I was thinking.
Right. You know, I confess, I'm not an architect, but I've been to a lot of commercial buildings. I feel like the guy that went to, you know, stayed at the Holiday Inn Express last night, and now is like doing brain surgery or something, but there's, there are-- there's, there are plenty of examples of commercial properties that create a sense of neighborhood, that create, they don't necessarily look like what they actually are. I encourage whoever's on your design team, architectural staff, to maybe look at examples of what I'm sure Avin Grid has done in other locations and utilities across the United States and the world. You have plenty of resources that are, you know, Google Earth, hey, where are all our substations and what looks cool? That's, I guess, all I'm
It seems to me, it looks more like an industrial building than something that would fit in an L B district too. I mean, that, you know, it doesn't have to necessarily be like the residential, but it's, it seems to not quite fit.
So, I'm looking at the rendering too, the newer rendering. Are you proposing just to change the frontage fences to the decorative fence and then leaving the fence abutting the neighboring properties on Kirkland and Empire as barbed wire?
As of right now, yes, despite our discussions with the engineering team. So if you would like to state anything for the record, I would be gladly happy to bring it back to them.
Well,
Cool.
Does somebody else on the board want to say that?
Admittedly, the one that faces the adjacent property owner is the one you'll see from Empire as you're driving up to Penfield with the welcome to Penfield sign.
Yeah.
Can you do, I have a question about, you know, I don't know if this is, if it's practical or not, like, is it, like, what other types of buffering also can there be? Like, are you not allowed to have trees and landscaping or?
We cannot. So there's existing lines already, there are overhead lines. And we cannot put vegetation or any trees underneath it whatsoever for clearance distances for the, from National Electric Safety Code. There are, also, we are not allowed to, as Mary stated, block the view from, for operations when they're driving by the substation. So we can't put veg there, and it's D O T right away anyways. They don't usually allow us to do it. Because there needs to be enough room for the fence line, and then it's almost right, immediate D O T, and then sidewalk needs to go in there as well.
Can I ask another question? Is it sized, like, the way it's designed, is it, like, could it be a smaller footprint? Or is it what it is because it's got to, you know, for whatever the regulations are?
So the footprint actually was decreased by smushing the four, I call them feedbacks lovingly, but pods, together to kind of make it look like it's more of one structure, which I know is still subpar, I get that. But the footprint is kind of minimized as much as possible. You'll see the darker hashing are the underground cables, the conduits, and there are additional things that need to go in as well, but these are sort of the high level, since this is conceptual design, high level. So we are confined by space, period, with every single substation build, rebuild. And honestly, the transformers take up a lot of space. So it's, we can, if the feedback is really, you know, we want
Dress it up and make it look pretty.
Pardon?
Dress it up and make it look pretty.
Right, make it look pretty. Yeah. But honestly, driving in a lot of the view of dressing up the control house is gonna be lost behind those transformers. So I don't know if flip them back to the original application, if you'd rather have something that's more dressed up in front with transformers in the back. I don't know. Rework takes time, or if you're, you know, satisfied with potentially choosing a more architectural design on the transformer block walls. It's kind of a few questions at once.
Yeah. I want to open it up. I feel as though I've been monopolizing everyone's time. And Kelly, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with everything that you're saying. Clearly, it's, I feel like it's a rock and a hard place because we need this, we need to upgrade the facility, but there's no, how do you make it prettier? How do you make it more appealing? You're limited to, you can't add, you know, green around anywhere, so, so what do you do? Does it mean, can you explain a little bit? You had mentioned moving the transformers in back of the building.
That was the original application.
Okay.
But the concern was, so the, the back of the wall would be adjacent to the residence
Okay.
To keep the noise down.
Right.
But then from the road, you would essentially see the transformers more. So then it was flipped based on previous comments we'd received, whether it was from the board or staff. I don't remember at this point. I'm filling in today.
So how are, how are the sites configured? As an example, the, the one on Plank Road that I had mentioned, where are the transformers there? How is that laid out from a
I think that's a gas rate.
logistical standpoint to allow the utility to do what it needs to do to maintain and monitor and so forth? And yet, most people in the general public wouldn't even know that's what it is.
I will say, I'm, I've creeped around Google Earth as well, and I know exactly what you're talking about, but I've never been into that facility. I'm not sure if it's electric, if it's gas, because they have different needs based on both of those facilities. I can go back and ask operations and try to get some more feedback and, you know, bring that into an updated application. Because I don't know, I don't know if we're talking, you know, similar voltages or not. I know you said that
Right.
Should all be the same. But from a utility standpoint, it's a very different application depending on what voltage you're talking about. Like low voltage distribution or high voltage transmission, you have very different needs. So I can get back, I can get back to you guys, even if it, or Eric can, since he's the one usually in on these applications. We can kind of put some documentation together and then provide it back to the board in writing.
Okay.
Do some sleuthing.
But that's also a much older substation, right? And it, and standards these days are, are different than the N E S C, like, so the codes that, that govern it are, have also been modified since that time. So, I mean, it, it's perhaps comparing apples to oranges. It also, we also don't have the benefit of all that lawn, which makes it look so much better, right? It makes it look, look much more like a house.
In that environment, yeah, certainly.
In the Plank Road environment, yeah. Or makes it look like it fits in much better because it has more space.
Right, right.
What's the address on Mount Hope Avenue that we keep referring to?
It's right by, was it Alexander there?
It's right by that.
It's either Hamilton.
What is it, Stillwater or something?
Swift Donding.
Yeah.
Swift Water.
What's that?
Yeah, I'm trying to think of where it is.
I don't know off the top of my
Swift Water.
Two, six, two, Mount Hope.
Two sixty?
Really?
Yeah, Matt, can you bring that up?
That's the station number.
That's the station number?
Station two, six, two. I'm not, it'd be cool if that's the address.
Bob, do you have any comments, questions?
Yeah, I had a question. The, the material that you're showing on the control house in the lower third, what, what is that exactly?
A stone.
Okay.
A stone facade that would be over the pre-engineered metal building.
So I thought it was interesting that lower third is dressed up more, but if you look at basically a street view, you aren't even gonna see it. So
It's hidden behind the fence.
It's hidden behind the fence. So, you know, if we want to dress it up, I think, you know, we want to concentrate, not that it's, from an engineering point of view feasible, but it would be nice to see a material like that that would go all the way to the parapet or the top versus
Continuous stone.
Yes.
Okay. So the stone
But not necessarily monolithic. Does that make sense that, I mean, there, there are people that know how to do all that and make it look cool.
Put some shadowing in, things like that.
Yeah.
Right now, what's on the bottom is because the buildings are raised for the cables to come in.
Okay.
So that's what it's covering. So it doesn't look like it's, still, it's in a floodwater zone. But we can definitely either bring it up or add a band at the top, you know, something like that.
Yeah, Matt, you just had the Mount Hope.
Yeah, I want to see that.
I know. The Taj Mahal.
Yeah, exactly.
Hamilton Street.
So you wouldn't even know what that is, right?
No.
You know, the big R G and E. You could even put the R G and E sign on there and get some free advertising.
They need it, they need good though.
We'd probably even go for that.
Do you need variances for this?
We'd even convince the zoning board to let you have a bigger one, maybe. I can't say that for sure.
Four, I believe.
Any variances, you think?
We're estimating four. So lot coverage, well, it might be multiple setback, variances, the fencing height and potentially the buffer between the two zoning districts, or reduction of the buffer between the two zoning districts.
On that Mount Hope one, even looking at the fence, just breaking the fence up with the brick columns was nice. That kind of dresses it up
Yeah.
Just breaking up the, I think the, I think the perimeter fence is just so gigantic that it's, like, you can't help but be like, what is in that building?
It also looks like you've moved all the utilities underground here.
Yes.
You have no overhead poles anymore. And I'm sure that they used to be overhead, because this is the middle of the city.
Right.
And it's been around for 150 years or more.
Everything was already underground before this station
Really?
Was built. Yeah. Moratorium with the city. But yeah, so for the columns, I'm not positive in this application, we could do that because of potential access. It's not as big of a deal here on Mount Hope because the building is totally locked. If someone hopped the fence, the building's locked. They can't get in, they can't mess with stuff. Usually, these are not allowed, and I will check with operations, but because of the potential to jump the fence and then you have energized equipment out and about.
And they're not allowed to be locked? The facility?
Are you saying that people climb those pillars or something?
Yes. And it's the same, it's another reason why we can't have big trees close by because of the potential access into the stations. So I can look into it.
You could say that's calling the herd, but I won't say that.
Fair.
Darwin Award.
I may not argue with you.
Just saying.
Is there a possibility the perimeter fence can be reduced post, when the old station is sort of decommissioned and removed, that, that fence could move further back? Or is there more equipment up in that north side that would have to remain within the perimeter?
So there's, underground equipment will remain. So that was the intent. And because of just facility spoils that are there, the, at least thought process was to keep it fenced. I can bring that as well back to ops and see if that's a
So if it could be pulled back a little bit, and even if you could do some ground cover or something next to it.
Yeah, I'd have to look. I know there's a bunch of conduits, a really big manhole that will, that's in the existing station right now that will stay.
Okay.
But I can at least take a look at it and provide a response.
Any other questions, comments from?
Would they have a Lopez look yet? Would you put it, input in it?
Certainly with a preliminary final, I don't know if it's
Warranted yet?
I mean, we, we could, but, yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't know if it's warranted yet when
After
I mean, we have, I thought we were fairly clear at the last go-around when it was on Seabury.
Seabury.
Seabury Boulevard, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think some of that too, is that that was much more residential than this is right now. So we thought there'd be a bit more given take with how the lot is zoned and what's around it. You know, there, yes, there's a residence behind it, but there's all commercial buildings adjacent to it.
Right.
Can't get much closer to the existing station than right next to it.
Than right next door.
So, yeah.
But it is still L B though, it's not, you know, like
Correct.
It's not industrial zone.
That's right.
It's limited business.
Yeah.
Right.
And
Which is, which does have a certain residential aspect to it sometime, like the old North Nickel building there was kind of what a lot of L B looks like. So
Yeah.
My two cents.
So let me open it up to the audience. If there's anybody here that would like to speak, give some input on this sketch plan application. I should make clear to those watching and those in the audience that this is a sketch plan, not a preliminary final application. So it's a, it's an informal discussion about a concept that our G and E has for, not saying the substation isn't needed, they need the substation, but this overall plan, details aren't there. It's for feedback like, like we're providing tonight.
No formal approvals will be granted this
Yeah, no formal approvals will be granted this evening on that. So if there's anyone here that would like to speak to this, you can also call in at three, four, zero, eight, seven, seven, one. In addition, you may submit an electronic comment at the Penfield website, which is penfield.org, and there should be a link to this meeting on the homepage of the website. I don't see any public participation right now. do you have any final comments on our feedback? We will put together a, a letter as a follow-up to the meeting, probably summarizing the board's thoughts and send it off in the next few weeks.
Sounds great. We can tell the team till we're blue in the face, but that letter will be very helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. You will get it. Any other comments from the board? All right. Well, thank you very much for your presentation and for coming and look forward to seeing you again.
Be back.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay. Doug, second application, second item.
All right. Application number two, Costage Engineering, two seventeen Lake Avenue, Rochester, New York, one, four, six, zero, eight. On behalf of DeMarco Baytown Associates, request under chapter two fifty, article twelve dash twelve point two of the code of the town of Penfield for preliminary and final site plan approval for a 2,700 square foot tenant build-out for a branch bank with a drive-through and associated site improvements within building A of Baytown Plaza at 1,900 Empire Boulevard. The property is now or formerly owned by DeMarco Baytown Associates and Zoned General Business, G B. Application number twenty-four P dash zero, 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 nine, S B L number nine, three, dot, zero, two, dash, one, dash, two, three, point, one, one.
All right, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Paul Calucci with DeMarco Group, here tonight on behalf of Community Bank, prospective tenant for Baytown Plaza. Joining me is Kurt Pomeranki with N E S Group. They're the program manager for Community Bank. And Nick DeMarco, also with DeMarco Group, property manager for Baytown Associates. As Mr. Sangster read, we're here tonight seeking preliminary final approval As Mr. Sangster read, we're here tonight seeking preliminary final approval and conditional permit for Community Bank to operate in an existing vacant 2,700 square foot tenant space, which is at the northwest corner of Baytown Plaza, just north of De Bellas. This is the last portion of the plaza that has not received facade improvements and the overall upgrades that you know and we've been part of presenting before this board for Baytown Plaza. To accommodate Community Bank, there'd be minor site plan improvements, including installing a drive-through ATM and drop box and remote teller, minor asphalt and curb rework to accommodate that. The site plan does show those improvements and how the drive lanes can be accommodated while still maintaining just over 30 feet for traffic to traverse around the plaza, which is customary for our other tenants, rear service access, access to Baytown Wine and Spirits. So it fits very nicely in that respect. Additional minor pavement modifications to accommodate ADA parking at the entrance to the Community Bank, having to maintain a no greater than 2% pavement grade. We are going to be doing a little bit of pavement rework to maintain those required maximum slopes, landscaping to redress the area once the drive-through ATM is constructed, and lighting, which would be accommodated with under canopy lighting and wall packs to meet the federal guidelines for ATM lighting standards. The facade improvements were shown in the design development drawings that we submitted, which include elevations, renderings. The Community Bank brand, which has been established and will be unfolding here locally, they're actually doing four new locations and trying to create synergies between all their new bank branches. Includes some materials which are shown on the renderings to kind of finish off that corner where we are keeping the aesthetic for De Bellas and everything to the south and really just finishing this corner. Materials include nichihah panels, which is wood look, redwood color is the Community Bank brand color, stone panels, which is a simulated limestone panel, which is in the field where the Community Bank sign would be, Alabama silver, and then ACM, which is creating that kind of tower element, a combination of dark gray and light gray, and then painting the existing CMU block to reflect the area that Community Bank will be occupying, identifying their tenant space, and then a black aluminum storefront. We did receive comments from PRC. We actually presented this to PRC, I think, back in April or maybe even before that, maybe March. Received generally good feedback with PRC. We did incorporate that into the original application. PRC memo was issued, and I believe it was dated June 11th. There was a prior one that came out that mimicked the June 11th version. Comments were very minor, adding some additional pavement striping, making sure that we had the correct signatory lines on various plan sheets. And then we also did receive comments from the town's landscape architect, and those plans were updated in concert with the landscape architect's comments. So that memo was submitted back to Mr. Sangster yesterday, along with revised plan set. Understand you may not have seen that revised submission, but I feel like we're addressing all those comments, and we're here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Terry, do you want to start off?
Yeah, sure. Excuse me. Yeah, Paul, first of all, like, is there any, do we have any photographs of?
I don't believe we ever got renderings or elevations submitted.
I'm certain they were part of the original submission. I do have a hard copy set here that I can pass around.
That'd be great.
You're unable to draw those up.
Are there any other ones presently in the Monroe County area, banks?
Want me to hand this to you?
Sure.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Do you have any?
We do not at this current.
So does the first one in Monroe County?
This is going to be in conjunction with the other two that are going to be.
Great, great.
Do you mind just introducing yourself and giving your address for the record?
My name is Kirk Pomeranki. I'm with the NES Group out of Mansfield, Massachusetts. I'm the project manager on the Community Bank projects that are taking place throughout New York State.
Thanks. What does, if you don't mind me asking, what does the program manager, like, what do you?
We essentially assist the bank in the fostering of the relationships with our general contractors and bringing the projects through Ishim. My company essentially is a design, marketing, and facilitator of banks and credit unions in the Northeast, and we will be working in conjunction with DeMarco.
Okay. Got it. Understood. Thank you.
Well, Paul, yeah, the, so the traffic pattern now is coming in from the De Bellas, that area? Is that the plan?
Yeah, so primarily, majority of traffic would use the main entrance, the signalized entrance, but as you know, we have multiple entrances and multiple traffic patterns. This pattern around the north side of De Bellas has been established since we opened Baytown Wine and Spirits. We also have the entrance, which is at the property just north of Gulf Car Wash, where there's a sign for Baytown Plaza. That direct connection into the plaza is also a route. So as customers of this branch bank start to establish the means of ingress and egress, I do see that many patrons would, to facilitate the drive-up ATM, just understand that pattern and come around. This can be accessed from the main signalized entrance, coming in, taking a left across De Bellas, and then doing somewhat of a U-turn to access the ATM. There is room for that to occur.
So in that case, you're driving up the, let's call it the west side?
Yep.
Of the building?
West side.
Turning east and then doing a U-turn, clockwise U-turn to come back westbound through the ATM?
And our plan, which we shared with PRC and which is also shown here, is all of the existing dumpsters are going to be consolidated into the east side. We are proposing to construct a screen wall, and then that would be where all tenants' refuse is kept. So it frees up this entire portion of the facade, little housekeeping, more consolidated. So what you're seeing now is all going to be consolidated into that back corner behind that screen wall and where the scissor lift is that Pet Supplies Plus and Baytown Wine and Spirits uses.
That's a good question now, because the two, you got the two dumpsters back there presently, right? They're not enclosed at all?
That's right.
So you're going to move them back and enclose them somehow?
Yeah, the plan is to construct a screen wall that would come north perpendicular off the wall and mimic the material on the facade behind it, so it just kind of blends That's what that is showing, essentially becoming a screen wall.
Because you're going to have two dumpsters or more back there, then?
There'll be as many dumpsters as we need for refuse pickup. Nick will work with tenants relative to individual tenant needs or more common area maintenance relative to shared dumpsters, but there is room for the tenants that are occupying this to move their dumpsters into that back location.
Is there some way we can mark the pavement there as you come around that corner to help their customers make that U-turn into that ATM machine?
Yeah, we certainly can show like a white.
White or yellow lines?
Yeah, it'd be like a pavement stripe showing how that curve can work. That was one of the comments from PRC that made its way into the updated plans, was adding some additional pavement marking. So in the updated set we sent over, we did show a double yellow lane stripe.
Okay.
For bidirectional traffic. We can add like cat tracks or a white line that would show the essentially movement to get to the, to the drive-up ATM.
Yeah, that definitely would be helpful. And the, so that's for the ATM. You're going to have two lanes there, runs the ATM, one's for the, well, like one of those chutes that goes into the branch?
Right.
Okay. And now, the bank itself, do they have like service people inside there and tellers? Is it like, do they have little offices they're going to have inside?
Yeah, they're, in that, in that set that I, that I sent over, aside from the architectural elevations, it does show the bank branch layout. It's on that handout that I gave you that shows how the interior operations reflects with the exterior.
You need any variances from zoning for any of this? No? And the landscape we're good with, right?
We addressed the comments from the landscape architect, so.
Hours of operation?
Bankers' hours.
Bankers' hours, yeah. Whenever.
They're never open.
Kirk, your hours, Kirk?
I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Typically, it would be nine to five, Monday through Friday, and then Saturday hours till just afternoon.
Till noon?
Yeah.
Lighting will be addressed, right?
We will have a lighting plan, absolutely, yes. Yeah, the lighting plan was.
We have that.
I'm just getting the stuff, so, yeah, I'm trying to take it all in. Thank you. You're my lighting expert, so you'll take care of that, I'm sure. Enough parking spots, right? Close enough for these?
Yeah, the overall plaza maintains a 5.4 parking spaces per thousand, which is in excess of town code. So we did add the ADA parking, which doesn't exist there today, just for proximity to a new storefront. The, there is ample parking in the plaza.
I don't like it. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
I do. So not to like beat the U-turn thing to death here, but I'm just trying to picture in my brain, I mean, me personally, I do all my banking online, and if I only go to a bank, it's literally to go through the ATM. So I can just imagine, you know, cars doing this U-turn. There's going to be enough space behind there to accomplish that and be safe from someone accidentally hitting the wall when they're trying to get their car. And I mean, I'm just, I'm also teaching my daughter how to drive now for the first time, so I'm thinking of kids, really? And I'm like, I don't know if my kid could ever just pull a Uie like that and hop into the ATM. So I'd like to know just a little bit more.
They're always going to use Venmo.
Right.
And they won't even know what cash is, so. Yeah, there's, there is ample room there, and like I said, we are maintaining, I think it's 31.8 feet from the new drive-through outbound curb to protect the drive-through piers. And notwithstanding, there's, there's bidirectional traffic. So people can come from any portion of the plaza heading towards this outside of coming in the main entrance.
The backside of the plaza there that I'm looking on the drawings here, there's the parking spots far out down, that's all the back of a business? Is that what I'm looking at? So it's not, or is it the front of a business?
So right now, you're looking at the, what's the north-facing wall?
Uh huh.
Space at Community Bank. So that large landscape island in the foreground?
Yes.
That comes out, and then the drive-up teller is going to be applied right to the wall to the right of that overhead door.
Gotcha. Okay.
Will the overhead door go away or stay? It goes away. And we can, we can show and demonstrate to town staff a turning movement that is going to demonstrate a typical vehicle. You think of like the Starbucks drive-through and the ESL ATM that we reconfigured there. Those tight space constraints work. We know that. Starbucks has been there, and ESL and all that functions, so we're happy to provide that turning movement to town staff to address that comment.
I do like the way it looks. I like the renderings that you brought, so it's cool.
Bob, any questions?
No, I was just looking again. What we're all concentrating on is that traffic path, and it's actually, it's a 270, I think, because you make a right, a right, and then another right to get in. So, yeah, we just have to be sure that the appropriate radiuses are there where not just little tiny cars, but, and it doesn't have to be anything real big, but even a pickup truck could maneuver, you know, through the drive-through.
Yeah, and we're assuming that that's the way that most people will come, also knowing that there's an alternate route where they can come in heading south towards this and reach the drive-up ATM.
Yeah, if you're the guy that has the big extended duly, you go there once, you do the U-turn, and you're like, this is terrible. Next time you go, you loop around and come in from the east, probably, just because you know. Okay? Any other questions from the board? I'd like to open this up to the audience. If anyone here in the auditorium would like to speak to this application, please raise your hand, or if you're one of the millions watching around the world, online, and all our streaming services, you can call. That's 585-340-8771, or visit the website, pennfield.org, and submit a comment electronically. I see no calls at the moment, and no electronic submissions, and no one raising their hand in the audience. So any other final questions from the board?
No.
Thank you all for your presentation. Appreciate it very much, and we'll call this hearing closed. Okay. Sketch plan letter. If we can do a strongly worded, I was trying to think of a better adjective, or adverb, that would be, would be adverb or adjective? Anyway, whatever it is, whatever.
Yes, we can do a strongly worded letter.
You know.
Is there a design criteria, like, that specifically applies for constructions in L B? Probably doesn't get down that granular, I wouldn't think, but.
I don't believe so. I mean, ultimately, we could look at the purpose of the L B, which is to provide convenience, small-scale retail and business, to support the residential.
And I would like to.
Base that's intended to be a buffer to larger commercial and more industrial-type uses.
Maybe put that, put that quote, the purpose, in the letter, so that when they talk to their people that they talk to, they're blue in the face. They see that.
Yeah, and you could also say maybe just because Webster allows that, doesn't mean that we're going to hear in Penn Field.
Could we move our, move our welcome to Penn Field sign a lot?
As part of, as part of this application, even though it was a sketch, we did part of the 239M process, because this, this does directly about the town of Webster. We did send it to the town of Webster for their feedback and consideration as an adjacent municipality. They did provide feedback. It was very similar to the feedback that.
We all provided.
We all provided, so they were concerned about the, they were concerned about the attractiveness of the building, the barbed wire and chain link fence, the minimal vegetation.
Yeah. Hideous look.
The firewalls around the transformers, and.
Well, and the things that we require and ask of other applicants in the neighborhood and other places in town. and other places in town. We're striving to have an attractive, pleasing-to-the-eye appearance when you drive up and down Empire Boulevard or any other street.
Would a material like brick be acceptable to the board? I think her, the initial confusion came with, I think we had a comment way back when they were on Seaberry, they proposed an exclusively brick building with no windows and a flat roof, and I think the board asked for either fake windows or real windows, something that broke up the facade, and I think that's where they're thinking that they didn't like brick.
Well, it's almost, honestly, it's almost as if they're.
Cheaping out.
Doing it for spite. I mean, any human in that, in the building construction industry knows that pleasing-looking fake facades exist.
Yeah.
And it's almost, it's almost, well, we'll show you, you know.
Make it look like it, like they would want it to look when they're pulling into their neighborhood, you know?
And the rendition of that building, it looked like there were some window features.
They did add that in their revised, so in the original submission, it did not include any windows, and the transformer walls were just plain block. The revision we got on Tuesday afternoon did include some additional, I don't know if they're, I didn't catch in their materials, if they're faux windows or if they're intended to be real. I believe they're likely faux windows, to try to make it look like an occupied structure.
Right.
Because an initial comment from staff was that the lack of windows made it look a little bit like a brick.
Even just different-looking windows? I mean, right now, it just looks like it's like a.
Shack.
Yeah. Like they could dress it up with something else.
It looks like a, like a construction trailer that you rent and take onto a site to build for six months and.
I know there.
Kirk's occupying it and.
There was, there was one project where, a couple of years ago, I know Jim, there was a discussion around, all I can think of is like a black glass, but it's not really a window.
Yeah.
And it really seemed to dress up the building, so it looked more like.
Something more.
I believe, did we do that? Yes, because we had looked at something like that. Was it splash, car wash? I think there was one, there was something.
It was the storage facility at Penfield.
Yeah, yeah.
That's it.
Oh, yeah.
Behind Charlie Brown's?
Yeah.
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 Yeah, Ron gave you a plug.
That's a good one.
So if we could get a.
Yep.
Strongly worded letter.
Could do a strongly worded letter.
With that.
I'll go through our, the comments that were made at the meeting tonight.
Yeah.
Summarize them into a letter and provide it to the board for your consideration.
All right. Somebody want to move to draft that letter?
Can I just say one more thing?
Yeah, absolutely.
Even if they looked at different roofs, I mean, it is just completely flat.
Right.
Well, so the, the way they described that building is that it's not really one building, it's the amalgamation of five smaller buildings.
Yeah.
So on the outside, it sort of looks like a singular building, but structurally, it'll be built as if it's five smaller buildings.
Mm-hmm.
Which is what it originally was in the previous application that they withdrew back in December of 23.
So you're saying they have to have a flat roof on it because?
No, no, I'm not saying that. No, they could, I'm sure there's other designs they could look at.
Yeah, I'd be willing to bet that there's plenty of very innovative modular construction companies that produce things that are, you would never know, or show up. I went to a builder's show once in Vegas, and, I mean, there was like a whole house delivered on a flatbed, and you just, you know, like unfold it, and it's a house.
Yeah.
And it looked good, so things exist.
Yeah. And definitely, you're going to see something about the fence, right?
Yeah. About having a decorative fence.
Well, the barbed wire.
Yeah, having the decorative fence go all the way around. So they, in previous iterations, they had.
Are they going to have junkyard dogs there too?
In previous iterations, they had fully fenced it with a decorative fence, and I even believe the sketch plan they withdrew in December of 23 had a decorative fence around it prior to them withdrawing the application.
Okay. Do we have a motion for the letter?
Sure. I'll propose a motion to send the letter.
I'll second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Knauer?
Knauer, aye.
Tidings, aye.
Okay. Appreciate seeing the renderings very much. Anybody have any deal breaker concerns, or is this something that we can? When I looked at all the PRC comments, and so it was pretty straightforward and, and minor, does anybody have any deal breaking issues with this?
No, I mean, the board wanted the turning template. I mean, they can provide that, that could be a pre-milear type of thing, so I'm not.
I mean, I could add as a condition of approval.
The comments were very minor in nature, so it's up to the board.
Okay. Does anybody have any issue with?
As long as they address those concerns. I mean, that was the big thing, traffic, I think, unless somebody's got a problem with the building. I mean, it looks good to me.
It looks.
You know, it's a good spot for it, I guess, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so do you want to move to the EAF in the application?
You have completed EAF, or two-part three.
I'll make the motion to complete the EAF, yes.
I'll second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Knauer?
Knauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay. And then we have, we can use a template approval resolution?
I'll make the motion.
To approve?
To prove it correct. Tidings.
I'll second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Knauer?
Knauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
All right. You have your bank.
All right.
Any other business that we need to discuss this evening? No? All right, well, thank you everyone for coming. Have a great rest of your week and the next couple of weeks, and we will adjourn.
Okay.